Let's go ahead and get started. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I've asked Councilman Lamar, Council President, to lead us in our prayer and pledge tonight.
Okay. Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, please be with us tonight as we conduct business of the city because we have very many important things that we have to discuss tonight and it may take a while. We have very, very important, hard decisions and decisions to make about our financial future for the next coming year. Also be with our, all of our city and...
Sorry.
Please be with all of our city employees too, as they work for the betterment of the community and for the citizens and keep them safe while they're out doing their appointed rounds and duties. And also, please be with our troops and our federal government and guide them in the right way to make decisions what's best for the country and for keeping our troops safe at home and overseas. In your name, amen. Okay, attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have a roll call, please?
Lamar?
Here.
Shropshire?
Here.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Rashers?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Trammell?
Here.
Here.
I don't have any listed petitions from the audience and I don't see any that would be, so we will continue on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that we would need to pull? I'm gonna pull K through Z, double A.
Double A.
Are there any others? If none, do I have a motion to approve A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J?
So, move.
Okay, we got a motion from Charles and a second from Lamar? Who can call for the vote?
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Here.
Tonight, as we go through this general fund budget, we encourage good questioning and conversation. We're gonna go through, just like we do every year, and we will start with item K, approved general government budget fund 201 for the '25-'26 fiscal year.
Motion?
I have a motion for Choya.
Second.
Second from Rashers.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
And I understand procedurally why we weren't able to get the numbers because that wasn't what was passed to the Budget Committee. Would we not be better served to let all of this go to the Budget Committee next week and then bring it back to the council meeting the following week where everybody's had time to look at it? Generally speaking, I think that all of us are probably okay with what the budget is, but we don't know what the numbers are and it's hard for us to look at the public and say, hey, we approved this budget that we didn't see until tonight.
We can do that, or we can just talk about it and then make that decision afterwards.
Okay.
There's not a lot of changes from what's been presented.
Okay.
Some suggestions, I think those are the suggestions you and I talked about, and a few others, and I have kind of briefed everybody on those going forward, so. I don't, if that's what we want to do, I would like to at least have the conversation first.
Yeah.
So do I have a motion and a second?
For what?
I'm going through the discussion and possible action for the...
Did you already do that?
Do what?
Didn't we already do that?
We did not get a motion on it. Did we get a motion?
Yeah.
Shropshire, Rashers.
Okay, well then let's discuss, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry, alright. So...
So, I'm sorry, Mayor, is this, for clarification?
201.
We're just talking about the general fund right now?
Yes.
201, okay.
201.
Thank you.
For the audience, we're gonna classify it as, these are all '02, 201 will be the department, this is the general government budget. I think on your papers, it shows a total of 657, 719. The only suggestion that I would like to make to that is to increase the general software to cover some of the casel expenses that we add, which would take that budget to 668, 719. And that is less the unallocated amount that we'll present when we're all through.
So you're taking that from 55 to what?
To 66. So that would put our total at 668, 719.
Tyler, where at on your spreadsheet is this at?
The very first page.
I know, but...
5260.
5260.
About halfway down.
Do you want that...
A little over halfway down.
I can give you the account numbers instead of the titles, that's 201, 5260.
What was that number?
We're gonna add 11,000, that took it to 50, or to 66.
Okay.
Any discussion or thoughts on that?
So everything else is the same.
Everything else...
You're just gonna go through each one and tell us what changed.
Yes, I'm gonna tell you what changed, is my intent.
Okay.
Everything else is, it was presented from the Budget Committee a couple weeks ago, yes.
It was 55.
It's going to 66.
And we can still approve this tonight without it all going back through BNP, right? Budget and Personal Committee?
Yes, or we can send it back to you.
That's great.
Alright.
You just have to accept it with changes.
I just wanna make sure there's not a technical issue there.
No.
Perfect, thank you.
So, what I'm gonna be proposing on the unallocated for that account at the end will be 414,707 and 37 cents.
Can you repeat that four?
Yep, I can, and I'll give it to you again at the end when we're all done. 414,707 and 37 cents. Are there any other changes on that? Mayor, I...
That's all the changes that you had, right?
That's all the changes I have.
I was trying to look at his spreadsheet, trying to figure out what we need to cancel.
We're on 201.
Yeah, made a copy. I figured you had your notes.
Your own data, I don't have any more than you have.
Yeah.
They read that.
That's 201 numbers there. And we're only adding 11,000 to...
Yours is like that.
201, 5260.
I didn't pull the one out of the packet. I...
So how do we know what's the right one then?
They're the same numbers.
They should be the same, yeah.
Yeah, nothing has changed since Budget Committee.
That's just what we used to...
The way that it looks is different than what we had at Budget Committee. The same numbers are there, but the way it looks is different.
There's no further, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion. We've already had the motion.
We already used to vote, right?
Well, this is the motion to approve with the change.
With the change, correct.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to approve with the change.
And that one is, the only one that's changing is the general software in the 201.
And then we'll add, if you notice, this does not have unallocated, so I didn't have that unallocated when he sent it to Budget, it was very clear about that, so that would also include that 414...
707, 37.
Yeah, to include the 414, 707, 37.
Yep.
And unallocated.
I totally don't understand all this.
Okay, he's gonna go over here to 5260, he's gonna raise 55 to 66.
Got it.
Alright, that's gonna raise the total up to 6...
608,000.
719, that's gonna be your total for this 201. And then, we're gonna add 414, 707, 37 as unallocated.
I got that.
Okay.
That's it, all there is to that one.
That's all there is to it.
Please, if you have any questions. Alright, so Troy, you amend your motion?
Yep, I've amended it.
No, I'm in my second.
Okay, call for the vote?
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Here.
Lamar?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion?
Alright, item K, approved community development budget fund 203 for the '25-'26 fiscal year.
Motion.
That's number L, but...
Letter L, but...
What did I say?
Case.
That's okay.
But I'll make the motion.
I crossed off K and I meant, okay. Yes, so we have a motion from Troy and a second from Rashers?
Uh, backwards, but that's okay.
No, who is the motion?
He did.
I made the motion.
Alright, this one, there were no proposed changes after it went through Budget Committee, so that one stands at 126, 477,01.
Okay.
See, 126, 477.
126, 477,01.
Yep.
Further discussion? If none, call for the vote?
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Here.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Item M, as in Mary, approved planning and zoning budget fund 205 for the '20-25-'20-26 fiscal year.
Motion.
A motion from Rashers?
I'll second again.
Second from Choya. This one, we originally put 2,500, I would like to up that an additional 2,000 to cover the cost of those.
You're gonna up it to 45?
That'll take it up to 4,500.
Okay. You wanna change your motion?
Yeah, so, I'll change my motion to include the increase.
I have some thoughts about that, real quick.
Your thoughts are gonna be the same as mine going forward.
It probably has to do with last week's announced by Minister Alward. And what is that going to, how is that number gonna affect us?
So, we've got to see what, so here's what's gonna happen. The periodicals and publications is whenever we have a legal notice or whatever, that's what we put in. Clearly, we're gonna have to use, Claremore is our next closest publication, so we've got to get some pricing from there and figure out what that's gonna be. I think we're gonna see it's gonna be somewhat close to where we're at, I don't know those numbers, so if you guys feel like we need to change that or whatever, we will also be able to use, you know, we've got some other accounts that'll have extra in them if we need to. I don't, it's kind of a...
Where did we pull it from last year? Because we budgeted 2,500 last year, but we spent 48.
We, I think we took some of that from, like, outside services, we took, we kind of pulled, we have legal publications in the 201, so we kind of pulled it where we needed to there.
Okay.
Kind of pulled it where you had it, huh?
Yeah, and we can do that again, that's not a problem, I just wanna make sure that we have the right numbers. I'd rather have the right numbers even if they're a little higher than whatever, but I feel if we start with 4,500, that gives us a good base to see what we've got going forward.
Okay.
So, amend your motions to 4,500?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
For 205? Okay. And call for the vote?
Rashers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Here.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Item N, as in Nancy, approved managerial budget fund 207 for the '25-'26 fiscal year.
I'll make the motion.
A motion from Troy and a second from Rashers.
You might as well just write that down.
No changes for this one after the presence, the acceptance of the Budget Committee, that total is 207, 183, and 63 cents. Further discussion on that? If none, we'll call for the vote?
Brown?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Smith?
Here.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashers?
Yes.
Item O, approved facilities department budget fund 208 for the '25-'26 fiscal year.
Motion.
A motion from Rashers?
Second.
Second from Charles? Trammell? On this one, you'll see that we upped the temp salary amount, nothing is changing from when it was presented, it's still 110, 762, 64, but we did add some funds to that. This is the first full year that we've completed now with 208. Recognizing that our two full-time employees might at some point need some help, or should something happen, we wanna be able to cover those positions with temps, so that was really the big change for this year, but that stays as it was, presented at 110, 762, and 64 cents. Discussion? If none, call for the vote?
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith? Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Item P, as in Peter, approved clerical accounting budget fund 209 for the '25-'26 fiscal year.
Motion.
A motion from Rashers?
I'll second.
Second from Choya. This one stays as it was presented at 303,541 and 78 cents. Further discussion?
Yes. We were paying the court clerk out of this, correct, last year?
Yes, so there was...
And that's been, that's gonna be moved back to the court later in the budget process.
Correct, so we had, we had kind of a duplicate, if you remember, we had two different employees last year. One was paid out of court, one was paid out of this, we moved our court clerk to the court.
So is this gonna free up or add another salary for a position in the, the city clerk's budget?
She will need to backfill that position on that, that clerk, the court clerk that resigned, and I think we've got that in here.
That's going to the court clerk, so there'll be, in other words, it'll be freeing up another person.
There is one additional position that is budgeted in this for that, and that is still a reduction from last year since we moved that other one to court clerks.
Just so I understand, are we adding a position?
No, no, we took one position and put it on, we had, um, help me with her name, went downstairs to my, Tyler, Taylor. Taylor, I'm sorry, um, Taylor was paid out of municipal clerks.
As a temp, if I remember correctly.
Correct, so we moved the salary for, um, the, the associate that just left, we moved that position to municipal clerk. So with moving that, that still will leave the ability to backfill that, but it will be backfilled under court, not under clerical. That make sense?
Tyler, can we get two court clerks?
No, we don't, we had to, we moved, so the one that just left, Ashley, was paid out of her budget.
Correct.
I've moved that to court clerk.
So is that a two-three-one account?
That'll be the two-three-one account. So what was paid out of here is now gonna be paid out of court clerks, out of the court fund.
Which will free up the pay for a new person additional, eventually.
There is, yes, eventually, there's still a position open, so she still has a position open, even moving that.
But you lost another one too, the one that was working payroll, so that's, that's, that's a whole difference.
Yes, and right now, we're using that position's funds to fund Lisa.
Lisa.
So-
So that position's currently filled, so to speak.
So to speak, yes, hypothetically, it's being filled, so.
So I'm kinda like, Terry, are we adding another position to this?
No, no, we took the one extra position that was in court, that was doing the-
He keeps saying backfilling, that's what I'm wondering, where are you backfilling from?
When that position is backfilled, she's gonna need the body, put this out, out of the question, she's gonna need the body, when that body is replaced, that body will be paid from municipal court, not from court.
And municipal court has the funds to do that?
Yes, it does now.
Okay.
Well, when you approve it, then it will, yes.
Collectively, headcount staying the same.
Yes, collectively, minus the temp that we had, that we pulled that one out.
Okay.
Sorry, now that's a little confusing, but it was shuffling around the payroll to get that, where those departments need to be paying for it.
We've turned down other departments from adding positions, I just wanna make sure that we're keeping the headcount the same, is that-
We're keeping that, we're not adding.
I'm, good.
And we've talked about that, there's no adding.
Yeah.
But she will need a backfill on that.
I understand.
All right, further discussion on that, thank you. Call for the vote?
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, item Q, um, approved city, city attorney budget, Fund two eleven, for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
Motion.
A motion from Rashers?
Second.
Second from Brown, uh, this one stays as it was presented at eighty-two eight.
We came in under this year, right?
I think what I did was, I'm pretty sure you did.
I'll tell ya.
Yes.
Yes, we were, that number is the same that we budgeted last year.
Forty-six hundred out under.
Yep, we had forty-six hundred remaining.
Thank you for that. We got a- You put a lot of time in.
Lot of miles on our attorney last, last year, so. Further discussion? Call for the vote?
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Okay, item R, approved city treasurer budget, um, Fund two thirteen, for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
Motion. Second.
Motion from, uh, Rashers, second from Troya, this one stays as presented at twenty-seven, three thirty-one, and fourteen cents. Further discussion? Call for them?
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Item S, approved school resource officer budget, Fund two fourteen, for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
Motion.
Second.
A motion from Troya and a second from Bradshaw, uh, this one, I wanna make a change to, uh, two fourteen, fifty-twelve, SRO longevity. There was a extra number added in on the spreadsheet, we're gonna remove, uh, nineteen thousand, four hundred and forty from that longevity, the new total will be three thousand, six sixty. That'll bring the total for this one to five hundred thousand, three twenty, and twenty-six cents.
Five hundred, three twenty?
And twenty-six cents.
Five.
Five zero zero, three two zero.
Okay.
Dot two six.
Okay, I have a question.
Yep.
This year, that is correct there, you have three hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-one for salaries?
Correct.
So last year, it was three hundred and seventy-six thousand, so why are we sixty thousand dollars less on salary, how are we, we're, why is that?
I think part of that is we have different officers, um, there, we're also removing the the higher-paid one, is, has not been there. There's one officer that was significantly higher-paid.
In the overall budget for last year, and I'm just gonna throw these numbers out to round them off, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, and this year it's five hundred and thirty? Thousand, so there's thirty thousand less, five hundred thousand?
Five hundred, three hundred and twenty.
Three hundred and twenty.
Okay, yeah, gotcha. So sixty-two thousand less.
Correct.
And then later on, when we approve the, if we approve the laptops, which I'm sure we will, possibly, that's gonna change accounts too, that, that funding's coming from?
No, because that's-
A change on-
That will come from funds that we don't budget, that's the training and the, it's like the salaries that we get back from the school, that three hundred thousand. It'll be paid out of that, but we won't, it's a reimbursement.
So those- In net zero?
Yeah.
Net zero, yeah.
Thank you.
Schools paying for it.
Okay.
So again, five hundred thousand, three hundred and twenty, and twenty-six cents. No further discussion, we can call for the vote.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Item T, approved police budget, Fund two fifteen, for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
Motion.
A motion from Rashers?
I'll second.
Second from Troya, uh, couple changes on this one, um, this one, I think is probably where I, I'm gonna own up to, there were some salaries that were missed when we did the initial. So I need to, in fact, it didn't have dispatch salaries on there, and there were a few others, so I need to add to the salaries four hundred and eighty thousand, that'll take that, uh, that line fifty-eleven to one million, eight hundred and ten thousand.
One million, eight hundred and ten thousand for salaries?
Correct.
Okay.
Also, um, Budget Committee did change fifty-thirty-four, they added twenty thousand to uniforms, that was added, um, those are the uniforms, correct me if I'm wrong, that the new officers get, that we've been taking out of like every account under the sun.
So, last year, when we hired new hire, all their equipment, uniforms, that first year, it's five to seven thousand dollars, that's where that was.
That's what you guys added, Troya?
Yes.
The fifty-thirty-four.
And then also on, uh, two fifteen, fifty-one oh two, we added another twenty thousand to raise the, uh, gas and oil to-
One oh five?
Yep.
So is the one oh five, including the additions of the N?
One oh five is, is the new total.
As is the twenty thousand for the uniforms.
Fifty-thirty-four?
Yeah, and you'll see the reason on that, fifty-thirty-four, I put one dollar, was, I wanted to see where we were at.
We need a placeholder.
Yeah, that's all it was, it was a placeholder, so it wasn't like we were gonna budget them a dollar, that clearly doesn't, so. Um, that brings the new, uh, total to, uh, with the changes that were made at, on Budget Committee, nine-ten, and the change from today, uh, with the four hundred and eighty thousand, that brings it to, uh, three million, four hundred and sixty, two seventy, and eighty-eight cents. One more time, three, four, six, zero, two, seven, zero, and eighty-eight cents.
I have a question.
I do too, when he's through.
What did we budget for salaries last year? I'm sorry, I don't guess I have that on my spreadsheet, but I thought I did.
Two million, forty thousand?
I have one million, seven hundred and nineteen thousand, five oh one, which is what you have too, on the column one of your spreadsheet here.
Okay, that's what we budgeted?
Yep.
Okay, I just remember that our agreement with the police and fire both on the contracts was we weren't gonna increase any of that.
I don't think we're increasing any of it.
Part of their contract negotiations, but maybe I've misunderstood, I don't-
Increasing, we're not increasing anybody's pay.
We did increase their pay, that, that they were gonna have to be able to make that work within the budget that we had approved for them last year.
Trying to just follow you.
When, is anybody else following me, or am I?
So the-
Did, am I speaking out of turn, I thought when we agreed on contracts, that everything we agreed on, we said that we could not add any more money to their budget. Or am I, am I not remembering it correctly?
Correct.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah.
So, I don't-
Keep in mind, well, okay, keep in mind, the salaries that I had to add were dispatched, they're not included in that, so I don't know if that's gonna play with that number at all, um, and that was four hundred and eighty thousand that we had to add to.
Where were they last year?
Who, the?
Dispatchers, where did they fall under?
They're just in that, that general, I have to-
The salaries line, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanna keep the commitment that we made to the taxpayers, that if we said we weren't, we made, we went through negotiations and we said we weren't gonna increase anything, or increasing it, it doesn't, it's not a good look for us.
Okay, so the numbers that I get are based strictly on the, the-
It's not an increase, it's just he left out the dispatchers.
But it is an increase from last year in the salaries budget.
No, we'll have him bite, part of that, I don't know if you got VAW wall, um, cops grant, but all, we have not added any staff. I don't know, and there's the executive session coming up that we are gonna talk about, how about that salaries, holding there or not?
So those-
I don't, I, I mean, my thoughts are, if we haven't had any staff, then the salaries should be one, seven, nine, five oh one, fifty-eight.
I don't know that in last year, that the, the grants that he was talking about were included in that or not, the numbers that I took were straight off of Lisa's spreadsheet.
Okay.
And if we didn't, promised it to anybody, we didn't change anything, so, that's literally a drop-down, we can go back and look at that one, and verify?
Well, since, since we-
This involves my wife's salary, I'm abstaining anyway, I'm just trying to bring up a point for both police and fire, that that was part of the negotiations.
So the salaries, if we did not add any positions, which I assume we have, is that right, we have, we're not adding positions?
No.
We have not.
We've got, we've lost higher-paying officers replacing with lower-paying, should the salaries be less?
I think the question is, to the mayor and to Jeremy, is, we've got ninety thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-two cents more budgeted this year in the two-one-five, five oh one, place salaries account than we did last year, so I think the question the council's asking is, what's causing that ninety thousand, five hundred dollar increase? That's, that's what we're asking, right?
Yep, but I'm curious about it.
And part of that might be those salaries, that's gonna be spoken about in the executive session, is what I'm assuming, I don't, offhand.
I know there was, there were steps added for officers over ten years, which I'm sure factors in, because at this point, there is a higher salary for those officers, but I don't know. I did-
Not to that amount, though.
Right, which is what I'm trying to understand.
Where historically, before this year, where was hazard pay and incentive pay, was that included in the place salaries?
So I've enrolled in salary, and that was one area that I didn't have a hand in, it was just like, that side of, you know, the, the clerk's office dealt with that side of it, so, um, but it was all rolled together from my-
It was always paid out of that FOGO one-one account, correct?
Everything was a salary benefits, as one lump sum, is all I can see.
I, I want us to honor commitments we made, and again, I'm gonna abstain, but I think we should honor, but I, we also need to honor the commitments that we made to the citizens too.
No, a hundred percent, and if we're wrong, then we'll, we'll fix it, um, but I think, if you guys are okay, we can table this one for a few minutes, and then we'll go back for the executive session, we can double-check the map, I'll double-check the map, if I'm okay?
Okay.
If we're, if we need to change it, we need to change it.
No, don't mind.
But everything else should be good.
Okay.
Do you wanna do it now?
Okay, may I ask my question now?
Yeah.
On overtime, you've got eighty thousand budgeted, we budgeted eighty thousand last year, but we spent nine, ninety thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine, so do you anticipate that we're not gonna have any overtime this year, since we spent more last year, then shouldn't that be accounted for?
I'm not anticipating that we're not gonna have any, that's why we budgeted any of that.
Well, I'm talking about to account for it.
But I think also, last year, we had some errors in our accounting, the early in the, we not having the-
There, there was some errors on, um, this side of it, where, you know, the two-hour shift thing, um, but we have eaten up a lot this last couple months with the events and short-handedness, I mean, we were down to three people on day shift the other day, so for a month, I had to cover, part of that was bonding leave and things like that, that took a person out, and so, um, I had to backhaul the shift, the people, we've been, two in the academy, um, two, one new hire, so, it's been short.
But we're still, don't you think we should budget more for overtime, since we spent ninety thousand last year? I'm sure it's gonna go over budget again.
We can do that, I mean, if you guys wanna do that, that's what this process is for.
I'm, I'm gonna be honest, I'd prefer us not, and manage it better, I think Jeremy is probably more game for that this year than of, of trying to keep it within bounds.
Once we get through, except for through the big events, once we get through the Bluegrass Festival, then we should be able to pull back some more, I mean, that will cut a, a lot of our regular overtime off.
My, my concern with raising overtime for anybody is that it, it's about like a benefit, it's never gonna go back down, and I'm worried that-
Well, do you have money elsewhere that you can make up the difference for?
Well, I mean, it-
Later? And we already know that we're already gone, we're just now approving the budget in the second, start of the second quarter of the year, so all the overtime, there's been a lot of overtime already probably spent in that first quarter.
That's where most of it is spent for us anyway, because of the events, so most of ours is eaten up in that first quarter of the year.
We haven't taken into account any of your grants either.
The grants, and also, if you go back to two fourteen, uh, some of that overtime with the SROs will be paid back through the school, that's not, that's counted into the, so, some of that'll be eaten back up with reimbursement.
But it's, it's speaking like the two-one-five account, like last year, we were below the hundred percent, so we, we come in good, you know, we were a little over that, but we're under in other places, which equal itself out, um, and that's where, by law, you have to be in, in the budget on our end, so, um, it, it worked itself out. I don't mind doing whatever, but I also don't mind watching it as we go along.
I would agree with Tyler, just keeping the date, you know? I would agree with Tyler, just keeping it a day, trying to make that mark.
Okay. And to, to Jeremy's credit, you've gotten a lot of grants. I know you've worked at the school a bunch. Last year, Main Street did a reimbursement for the help that we got.
And they talked about it again.
You deserve credit for finding other ways for the city to be reimbursed and not expend tax dollars. Thank you.
So we can come back to this one later in the meeting?
Yes.
Table till later in the meeting.
I'll change it to table.
For shares?
Yes, I'll change mine as well.
Call for the vote.
For shares?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith? Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Thank you. Item U, approve animal shelter budget fund two sixteen for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
Motion.
A motion from, for shares?
I'll second.
Second from Brown. This one stays as originally presented, two hundred and sixty-five, nine, ten, and sixty-two. There were a lot of repairs that we did last year that were one-time repairs. Some of those were from donations, some of those were not. Those were not gonna be duplicated in this year, so some of those funds were, were reduced.
Is mayor's just an increase or same as or?
It's, it's down almost thirty. Jeremy?
Well, he's coming in. Bruce, we did, we budgeted nine, or two ninety-five, seven seventy last year.
Hey, on temps on animal control, it's at twenty, and you guys spent twenty-three, three. And I know, as Hardjus just left not too long ago, and I mean, is twenty a realistic number?
Um, I'd, I'd have to see where we're at right now. So I really don't know. We have used quite a bit of it, 'cause we were down to two at one time, and then when Jared went to training, then that put, back it up nearby ourselves for a while. We're back to three, full staff now, so we're good now, but I'd have to.
Okay.
See where we're at at this point in the year with it.
So is twenty a comfortable start then, I guess? I don't, I mean, I don't, wanted to raise it up too high, but we spent twenty-three last year.
Trammell. You're more on the selfish side of it, you know.
Far time?
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're tracking, aren't we, exceed it? What's, what do you want the budget at right now?
It's at twenty, and, but we spent twenty-three last year, and that's why I'm wondering if it doesn't need to be on the safe side.
We can, we can be raised, because we're gonna, we're tracking right now because of the, the manpower issues we have out there to exceed that budget.
Okay.
And that one, that whole budget remained really flat. I mean, that was, just gonna, depending on animals and things.
So my question now is, if we increase it by X amount of dollars, realistically, it's probably gonna come from unallocated reserves at four fourteen. Do we have to go back and re-approve that budget again? 'Cause that number's gonna change.
You can pull from unallocated reserve anytime you want to. So if you leave this the way it is, then you can pull it from an allocated reserve.
But the, but the approved budget would have to be, to, in order for it to balance, it's gonna have to come back out of that for the start.
Did we say to, to oh one at six sixty-eight, seven nineteen?
Yes.
So that, that number does not include the unallocated, so that can be.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be, okay. I just mean, for whatever we send to the county to approve tonight, we have to have our flat number, so.
So would you guys prefer to raise that five? Yeah, I mean, that would work with that, five thousand.
Do you think, Kevin, do you think twenty-five is a comfortable number? Okay. Okay.
So that would change that number to two seventy, nine, ten. Who had the motion in the second one?
Me and you.
Yeah, I'll change, so I'll change my motion to, to increase the fifty sixteen account to twenty-five thousand. Further discussion on that? Again, that takes us to two seventy, nine, ten, and sixty-two cents. If no further, please call for the vote.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Yes.
Item V, approve fire department budget fund two seventeen for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
Motion.
Second.
A motion from Shropshire and a second from Rashir. Again, this is another one where we had missed some salaries at the budget level on the tenth, so we need to add to those salaries a hundred and sixty-six, eight ninety-eight, and twenty cents.
Which account? Do you go up now?
Five eleven, or fifty eleven.
We're on two seventeen, the fire, this is fifty eleven. We need to add a hundred and sixty-six, eight ninety-eight, and twenty cents.
So what would that total be?
That would take our total for the entire account?
No, for the salaries.
For the salary.
Be the one I didn't do the math on there.
So you said a hundred thousand?
No, a hundred and sixty-six thousand.
Oh, okay.
That's gonna take us to a million two sixty, seven forty-two.
Even?
Yes. A million two sixty, seven forty-two. That takes the total to two million one twenty-seven, two fifty-seven, and twenty cents.
Back to Tyler's point with the police on the fire salaries with the whole negotiating and approving the, the contract we had, but we said we weren't going to increase salaries. It's, what's the difference in the?
Well, the difference is, is it left off, when I did the, the math on that, fifty eleven, it left off salaries in the spreadsheet, so. This is again, just flat right off payroll chart.
Yeah, this is, but this is a flat, like, they understand they're, they're gonna have to work with them in their budget, from, that's the same as last year.
Yeah, just like the mayor said, we met a week or two ago when, or it's probably been a little longer than that. There were some things, when you get that spreadsheet that's got the whole payroll deal, it's got from the education incentives and this and that. And it'll run it down, and it'll show the lines they come out of, and I think there was just a couple of those rundown lines that were for this account, that just didn't get captured when he was throwing the numbers in there. So I think once those were identified.
Well, yours, yours actually had quite a few things that we had to navigate, and I wanna be careful with what I say in, in respect to employees specific. We, we had in our transition with our former payroll clerk, all of, on the, on the spreadsheet only, this is on the spreadsheet only, to be very clear. All of the fires were given, there was a two thousand dollar something that they had all been given in addition to what they already get, so we had to go in and pull that thirty-six thousand out.
Yeah.
But then we realized that we needed to put another thirty-eight thousand in for pending situation. So it kinda washed each other out, but then we also realized that there was a hundred and sixty-four thousand that was missed in the salaries altogether, so. The thirty-eight, thirty-six, plus the one sixty-four puts us at one sixty-six, eight seven, eight ninety-eight added.
And I think once Lisa, she, she pulled those deals off and.
Correct.
And it, it all aligned at that point, but there was, there's something added beforehand that shouldn't have been there, but we've got two contracts, and sometimes you assume this goes for both, and they don't always.
They were health incentive or something.
There was a health incentive deal that I think's in another contract, they don't have in theirs, and then the other things were just missed, just 'cause you wouldn't assume, well, that doesn't pall the salaries, but like it does if it's their education incentives and stuff like that, but I think Lisa pulled that out, and the lady's always been great to throw numbers at us when we ask or help us out, but.
All right, further discussion on that? So the new total would be two million one twenty-seven, two fifty-seven, and twenty cents. Call for the vote.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashir?
Yes.
Brown?
Abstain.
Item W, approve park budget fund two nineteen for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
Motion.
A motion from Rashir. Second, second from Joya. Again, this one remains as it was presented at the budget on nine, ten, two hundred and ninety-four thousand, five sixty-six, and fifty-eight cents.
Mayor, how, Matt, how did we do on the temporary, how did we use those? Did we, we do a little money on those?
Yeah. Yeah, and we, we moved, Frank, you're welcome to come up. We did move one employee from temp to city employment, and that employee has waived the benefits, so doesn't need them, so that's.
We actually haven't done that yet.
Thought we had done that already.
No, he's, that's the one I was talking about the other day, where he's trying to throw the ultimatum thing.
Yeah, so there's a change there.
Yeah. So right now, nothing's changed.
On your temps, is that, is it, do you feel like that was sufficient, a budget amount for what you're gonna need or?
It's been the same for years.
I know that we talked.
Basically, he just mows the ball fields and Bobby Buck, and so I just kinda liked, actually, this year, we're still mowing. Yeah, I might keep him a couple of weeks longer, but then in the spring, I'm starting later, or.
Okay, well, I just know that you had talked, we had discussions this spring about, we might need to pay a little bit more, and we might need to get.
That's, well.
So I just didn't know how that was gonna factor in.
Apologize, that was a conversation him and I had.
Yeah, okay.
Friday.
I didn't know how much to say, yeah.
Spill, spill the bit, no, I, no, but, but I, I just, I just wanna make sure that we're, what we're doing is.
I mean.
I don't, I don't want you to feel like you're getting handcuffed in the spring, and we're like, well, there's nothing in your budget to.
Well, a lot of it's on the ball field, you know, it's like if they, if we have a wet spring like we did, that actually helped, 'cause he couldn't mow as much. But, um, actually, this past year, he has a few more hours to work because he didn't work as much. Every year's just a little bit different. Um, but it can put the ball fields in a bind if we don't, you know, I mean, an extra thousand would be, just even one more thousand would be beneficial.
I, I mean, I would be in favor of, that's not a lot of money, but if it does, if that gives you guys some breathing room out there, then I think that would help.
One more thousand, that's, what about rounding it up to fifteen instead of thirteen? That'd be better.
Yes, I don't have the number in front of me, but from, from thirteen thousand, fifteen thousand?
Yeah, that'd cover everything. You may not use it, but you have it.
He, and he does come back sometimes in the winter and help, like when we do the Christmas lights. One of our projects that I'm coming with later on, he might be coming back and help with that, you know.
So that would be an increase of thirteen sixty-seven and eighty cents?
I just don't want you to get in a bind like it was this spring, where we're trying to get somebody hired, but the money wasn't right, and then we're trying to find it.
And he, he helps other stuff too.
Well, I think it's one of those things, again, like we said, typically by now, we're putting the mowers away.
Yeah, I looked at that way right now.
So Paul decided to come late.
Would we be willing to change our motion to add one thousand three hundred and sixty-seven and seventy-nine cents to two one nine fifty fourteen?
Gonna add what to?
One thousand three sixty-seven and seventy-nine.
I thought we were taking it up to two thousand.
I thought we were just gonna take it to fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand.
That takes us to fifteen thousand.
Okay.
We're not adding fifteen thousand.
I've got thirteen thousand.
For that one, too.
Right, thirteen thousand plus one thousand three sixty-seven takes us to fifteen.
That math, that takes us to four, that takes us to fourteen.
That's, that's, that's what you call mayor math.
Y'all need to start all around the budget thing.
Fifteen thousand minus what we got.
Did I have the motion?
There was only thirteen even, is what we had for it, it was thirteen even.
We got thirteen even.
I have to do a lot of pre-check.
Yeah, I'll own it, I'll own it. Just trying to do it quick, I apologize.
That's okay.
Two thousand even.
Well.
Two thousand even.
Say, if I made the motion.
I apologize.
I will adjust my motion to add, to set the fifty fourteen account to fifteen thousand.
I'll second.
That's a total. There's that one, yeah. Two ninety-six.
Five sixty-six, fifty-eight.
Okay, I apologize. I was trying to do that while you were talking, and I wasn't, so we're gonna add two thousand. So that would bring our new total for two one nine to two hundred and ninety-six thousand, five sixty-six, sixty-eight?
Yep.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight. It's all good.
Fifty-eight.
Okay, I saw, fifty-eight, I saw six. Trying to look over his shoulder. And keep track of what we're adding, so. Further discussion on that? So one more time, two ninety-six, five sixty-six, fifty-eight. Call for the vote.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashir?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Item X, approve library budget fund two twenty-one for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
Motion.
Second.
A motion from Joya and a second from Rashir, is that correct? Two twenty-one is as presented from the Budget Committee at five twenty, four sixty-five, and seventy-two cents.
Okay, Mayor, I have a question.
Yep.
On the fifty thirty-two, library non-book materials?
Correct. We pulled a hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred out of that one, so.
Right, but on the sheet that you had, that you had presented to the Budget Committee, you had fourteen thousand six hundred written down there.
That's still what I have on here.
Okay, I'm just going by this other spreadsheet here.
Nope, I show fifty thirty-two, fourteen thousand six hundred.
Okay, all right.
And that was changed at the Budget Committee.
Okay.
We noticed, so.
That's, you don't have to explain, I'm going by the big spreadsheet, there's a difference.
Well, I wanna explain to everybody, so I understand why we pulled a hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred out of Carrie's book fund. As most of you know, I too am learning Casell, and I didn't know that if you don't hit the decimal, it just adds zeros. So her fourteen thousand six hundred ended up being a hundred and forty-six thousand, and Carrie did come to us and go,
Thank you.
I don't want that. But she does, but she was very forthright in that, so. Sorry, your honesty cost you a hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred, but.
Okay.
So we're five twenty, four sixty-five, and seventy-two cents.
I would've put somewhere else, the spread out.
I'm sorry, Mayor, what's your new total on that?
Yeah, it stays as it is on the sheet, five twenty, four sixty-five, and seventy-two cents.
Okay, thank you.
I have four forty-five on mine. Well, I mean, they all have, we all have the same spreadsheet, but.
This is about automatically calculated.
Okay, I may have, we're down wrong, so.
That's not mayor math?
Nope.
It's Casell math, which, is that about the same?
We'll find out where I screwed up.
All right. You know, we'll take a little.
Yeah, so fifty twenty-five should be five eighty-one, twenty-seven.
On yours?
Yep, which is workers' comp insurance.
Should be what?
Five eighty-one, twenty-seven.
So five twenty, four sixty-five, and seventy-two cents. There's no further, we will call for the vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashir?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Thank you. Item Y, approve cemetery budget fund two twenty-three for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
Motion.
Second.
Motion from Rashir and a second from Joya. That one stays as presented at one hundred and sixty thousand. Motion from Rashirrs and a second from Toya, that one stays as presented at one-hundred-and-sixty thousand, six fifty and sixteen cents.
Same question on temps, I don't think we budgeted anything this year.
No, and Frank had actually said to take it out.
Okay, perfect.
There's no further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashirrs?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
So Mayor, what'd you hit down for the total on that one, then?
I'm sorry, one-hundred-and-sixty thousand, six fifty and sixteen cents.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, item Z, approve emergency management budget, two-twenty-five for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
Motion.
Motion from Rashirrs?
I'll second.
Second from Toya. Um, this one looks a little different, for whatever reason, um, when we got into the budget from looking at last year's, you'll notice that there, we didn't budget Johnny's salary, for whatever reason. He was paid, and we, we, we split that with the county, but this is the correct number, um, twenty-three thousand, one ninety-four. That is as it was presented and approved by the Budget Committee.
That's right.
There's no further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashirrs?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Okay. And item double A, approved municipal court budget, fund two-thirty-one for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
Motion.
I have, uh, a motion from Toya and a second from Rashirrs.
Whatever.
This one, um, I need to add fifteen thousand to, uh, two-thirty-one, fifty-eighteen. When I went through the spreadsheet, um, there was one column, um, under our prosecutor that was not given an account number, but it was for fifteen thousand, and that's for, um, calls and things that he gets that we do have to pay for. So we need to change that to one-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, six ninety-three oh one.
And twenty thousand, six sixteen for that, fifty-eighteen, right?
Correct.
Okay.
He can't work for free?
One-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-one?
Ninety-three oh one.
Oh one.
Thank you.
What to make that total?
And I wanna just make mention on that, as we've been going through these spreadsheets, we're, we are trying to correct and keep an eye on those things that have been brought to our attention, so. Alright, so, um, we need to go back and look at when we're done here, and call for our vote here in a second. We will need to go back to two-fifteen, so we'll take a short recess after we're done with double A. Any further comments on double A? Call for the vote.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Actually, let's, uh, do you get Charles? Okay. Let's go on, we'll take our recess for that one when we go back there for executive session, I'll look at it. Um, we'll go on to the mayor's report, item A, discussion on possible action to allow the city clerk's office to accept applications for the deputy court clerk position to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Ashley Bryant.
So move.
Okay, got a motion from Carrie?
Second.
Second from Toya.
Yep.
Discussion, kinda already had this one, this is to replace Ashley. Okay, no further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Rashirrs?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Item B, discussion on possible action.
Hey Mayor, can we jump to item F of your mayor's report so the Enterprise clerk's gonna have to, I know they're loving sitting here, but, listening to all this, but would you mind?
Item F?
Yeah.
We can do that, we can do that. We will, and we're in item S.
Maybe do C first really quickly?
Y'all are throwing me for some.
Well, I'm just saying that they're very patiently waiting to happen.
Yeah, we're good, so.
Hang on, let me look.
Go ahead.
Okay, let's do C, and then we'll do F.
Yeah.
Alright, then we'll come back to B.
Moving to C.
C. Discussion on possible action to hire Andrew A. Botello, uh, as a part-time library assistant at the Thomas J. Harrison Public, Prior Public Library, effective October eighth, twenty-twenty-five, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Pam Howard. Part-time positions are paid ten dollars and eleven cents an hour with a maximum of twenty-five hours per week.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion from Toya and a second from Lori Bradshaw? Discussion? Done, we will call for the vote.
Brown?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashirrs?
Yes.
Congratulations. Alright, item F. F, we're jumping over one. Um, discussion and possible action regarding the authorization for the police department to enter into a lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management through Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing for ten new vehicles, five Chevy Silverado, fifteen-hundred crew cab, four-by-four SRO units, and five Ford Explorer utility all-wheel-drive patrol units, including associated aftermarket upfitting to be paid from Police Department Vehicle Capital Outlay Account, four-four, four-four-five, five-four-one-eight. This purchase will use funds from freed-up lease payments and surplus vehicle sales revenue.
Motion.
Have a motion from Toya?
Second.
Second from Lamar. Jacob, I'm gonna give you the.
Yeah, thank you guys for having us back out. Um, the last time, we kinda spoke speculatively about the police fleet as a whole and kinda some of the areas that we felt we could make a change. Spent a lot of time with chief, as well as, um, outfitters, et cetera, getting everything kinda finalized, so we have hard numbers to move forward with, uh, ten leases, five SRO vehicles, and then five patrol police interceptors, which are the Explorers. Um, so those will be ordered through Enterprise, leased back to the police department, and then aftermarket will be done locally at MEU, which is here in Pryor. Um, we have hard quotes on all those, and then the chief, I believe, sent you guys, like, some of the highlights over, um, of plan as a whole. Um, from what I was reading, you guys are obviously more in tune with the budget, there's no new revenue or anything needed with that. Um, in fact, if I'm reading right, it looks like it frees up some excess funds. The biggest piece to the plan as a whole, and where we ultimately wanna take Pryor's fleet, um, we can do this with streets, parks, et cetera, any vehicles throughout the city, um, is really get you guys to a point where you're not spending a ton of money in maintenance, which has kinda been the reality right now, um, as well as not getting much on the backend for the resale side. So we've done this with a ton of other cities, government entities, um, and this is kinda where we've ultimately found makes the most sense to start for Pryor.
And I can speak a little bit on the, the budget side of it. So where we're coming up with the numbers, um, is going to be, out of that five-four-one-eight account, so if you can see it, I got the breakdown of it right now. So some of the leases that were out of that five-four-one-eight account, one of them that's paid off is the twenty-two Ford Explorers, that was sixty-four, sixty-six, nineteen, that was paid off in August. So this year, that one will have an excess of sixty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-one ninety in it, plus, if you figure, we sell, and he had us figured at twelve, but we're selling about fourteen or fifteen vehicles, that would be surplus out of the fleet, would roll back into that account to go back to this first-year lease. So that excess, if we're calling it eighty thousand, plus the sixty-four, which is already in there, is one-hundred-and-forty-four, six-six-one. The dispatch records lease pays off in December, that's eleven thousand dollars, that's gonna free up for this year, uh, sixty-six thousand, um, three dollars, seventy-two cents. Then we also have got one, we're looking at rolling the thirty-nine, thirty out of there to the bond payment, because this were computers and leases for the, the building, and that would free up twenty-seven, five-one-two, seventy-three for the year. So total freed up for the year, if we do that, would be two-thirty-eight, one-seventy-seven, um, ninety-five, so the first year, that will leave an excess, twenty thousand, nine-two-seven. Um, and then after that first-year payment, the payment would be the one-twenty-two, one, I gotta see my glasses. One-twenty-two, two-seventy-two, twenty for the ten, um, so that's, if we did those things in that account, that frees up one-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars, four ninety-four, um, excess in that account for next year, um, if we do those things. That excess money can be used, obviously, this is a long-term thing, it's not a, uh, one-and-done deal, so you're gonna be continuing, each year they come in, like, the fleet, that's where we started, where we started at, was because, if you look at the surplus vehicle total, you know, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen, one-oh-two, and one-oh-one are all SRO vehicles, um, and they're, um, anytime they hit the road, they die. Um, the one-oh-one and one-oh-two are not even near police vehicles. We looked at different options, and on the SROs, if we do the six, two-thousand-twenty-six trucks, they're not PPVs, which are the police package, they're the regular package, nine months of the year, they're in the school, the resale value in five years, you're gonna have a lot more equity, you guys can speak on the equity return, in the end, and how that goes in to your next purchase as you move along. So ultimately, the goal would be to be on the, the lease, drop the maintenance, so, um, that's kinda, the number that we came up with, the ten, is, 'cause those are the units that were killing us in maintenance, um, we're trying to get rid of any of the lemons, that takes everything twenty and below off patrol, so there won't be anything but twenty, twenty and above out on patrol, which then lowers our maintenance costs, um, the schools are just junk right now, um, so that's why, those will be replaced, and the excess, we had more than eighty, could also go towards that, and obviously, next year's fund. When we're done budget, we would look at kinda where we wanna go with this, and so we would, you know, add, if we're gonna do two, three vehicles next year, whatever we wanna do, as far as what makes sense, you know, financially in that budget. Our other capital outlay account, the five-four-two-four also has money that we look at maybe moving to the bond. Um, part of what we're doing is looking at trying to free up some excess capital outlay that's eating up where the city can't use anymore, so it would allow some other projects within the, the city, besides just the police leases, which we're in. And ultimately, on the police lease, it would just be the police lease and nothing else, there would be not all this other stuff on it, so it's all kinda ran together, that's kinda my ultimate goal.
So, really, the question for the council is, do we wanna go to the direction of leasing our vehicles instead of owning them? Essentially, right? And if this goes good, realistically, the probably, we would continue this with our fleet.
Correct.
So a quick question for Jeff, catch with your head down. When a city is looking to get rid of their assets and going to a lease purchase, are there any advantages or disadvantages into having the liquidity of the cash, I guess, but, but you're, you're losing a, a physical asset?
Usually, hard assets for a city aren't that important as much as the cash that you have and your liquidity.
Okay, so you don't see any major disadvantages, 'cause I didn't see any either, but I'm not an accountant, so.
No, 'cause, you know, you're not gonna find it for anything based on cars or assets you have, it's how much money you have.
It, it's honestly seem more like a burden for the city to keep and maintain all of these older vehicles, and then you surplus them for pennies?
Well, it can be considered that, certainly, 'cause you, you know, you have to maintain the equipment, and city budgets are a cash basis, cars don't.
Right.
And in my mind, it would give us a better budgeting tool moving forward, um, as we go along, plus a, a plan, because right now, I could replace two with cash or leases, and they're so high, that, I mean, I, I looked at the titles, we replaced three in the, um, it's a two-hundred-and-seventy-some thousand dollars we, we owe on that, so, it's, you're either gonna spend it to a bank, or you're gonna spend it to a real company, but in the end, you're not gonna have any more money out of the car, because it's junk, um, and this is where they come in, as far as helping with the fleet manage it, and we don't have to worry about BG anymore, I don't think, so. And, and, and you guys can speak more.
We didn't bring this up.
You guys can speak more on, on the end of it, as far as payments, but you don't pay till the car comes in, for the half, uh, upfront aftermarket cost, or any of the upfitting, so the stuff that we put in that car, half of that will be due when the car's delivered. Um, we don't pay that till that time comes, 'cause it's time to build that, um, and as they're coming, we can continue getting rid of vehicles, a, as well as that end of it, and then the payments, um, how does the payments work, kinda says an annual lease, you guys, you guys can deal on that.
A monthly quarter?
It would be a monthly payment, and, reviewing.
And so, my only question for you guys is, if we were to continue to build upon that, whether it's with the police department or within other parts of the city, is there a pricing model that there are different, based upon volume?
Um, so, we are piggybacking off the Sourcewell contract.
Okay.
I think I mentioned last time, that's by far our best possible pricing, so, I would tell you definitely that's the route to go.
So let me ask you guys this, um, in this, this item, we have it, uh, to authorize the police department to enter into that lease agreement, clearly, these are for the police department. If we were to enter into that with the city, could we still keep the police leases separate from whatever we do? That would allow us to, if we decide in six months, we're ready to go forward with other departments, and we don't have to go through this all over again.
City of Little Rock, um, is a good example of one that would split it, so they have a City of Little Rock Police Department as a client, and then they have the city as a client, so there's two different clients there. A lot of cities will do sub-customers, so City of Pryor enters, does, police departments over here, from accounting standpoints, it's really up to you, but once you've piggybacked off the Sourcewell contract, you've done the due diligence for the contracts, and so it would be very simple, it would be.
I think I'd feel better if we just did it through the city, and then that would allow us to move forward if we needed to.
If you had a car go down this year, and you only had six thousand dollars on a budget to do it, you would be very easily.
Be ready to go with that.
And lead times on these, so. Because they're twenty-sixes, so they're obviously production.
Production has started on most of these vehicles currently, um, I had to give a sixteen-week, like, lead time, where people should feel confident, you've chose a great outfitter with MEU, they're one of the largest facilities, and able to get through vehicles as fast as I've seen, so, it's, it's really, vehicle comes in, and then we have everything, should have everything ready to be put on it when it comes in.
I, I may have overlooked this in the proposal, but if a vehicle's involved in an accident, would you send a new one in, or how does that work?
It would go through the insurance process, there are other insurances, and so, they would go through y'all's policy procedures on a total vehicle, if that was the case. Now, if it was an accident where, depending on what your insurance policy would state, does it give a spare, or does it give a replacement, or do you just?
Nah, we just usually got left a, a poor car.
So, hopefully with the funds that the total loss would bring, you could, we could get another vehicle in, and so that would be what I would consider a stock purchase, we would find one that's somewhat upfit, ready to go, and there's some out there, so it's not a hard.
But we would bear the cost of re-upfitting it in, in that instance?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we can know what we're getting into.
Um, my hopes is, and I just had it with the City of Alba, they had a total loss, that they decided to lease a new one with us, and we took a little bit of the equipment off, it was a front collision, so there was some sirens and lights that kinda go, but if it's a brand-new vehicle and you lose stuff, I would imagine you could pull some of that stuff out.
Some of it, and I would assume that O-MAG would take that into factor, I mean, that's something we can check with on the insurer, but they should take the equipment into that factor as well, that the replacement cost of the vehicle plus equipment.
And then yearly mileage restrictions?
None.
Okay.
Mayor? So your recommendation is that to make this agreement with the city, not the police department?
Correct, and then, like he said, do a sub-customer.
I think that's a good idea.
That way, it's a, it's one-and-done.
And I, I've got a couple of quick questions. One is the, uh, did you, Jeremy, did you say that the pickups, and I know I'm gonna use the term "basic truck," it's not gonna be a police package on them, that's why it's a little bit cheaper, just a standard, nice fancy truck.
It's actually a little more expensive on the front end, it sells cheaper, or more, for more on the back end, so, we could get a police package truck for cheaper now, um, than you can what we're getting, but when you go to resell that police package truck, you're not gonna make any money.
Okay.
Whereas you can make money on this one.
Okay, and then you did say that there's no mileage. Okay, and then you did say that there's no mileage restriction?
Correct.
And how, what's the, the length of the whole total lease?
So they're all sixty month leases and that's just based off of the mileage parameters that you guys are going right now. There is no mileage restrictions, but we want to make sure that we're selling them at a good point in time. So across the fleet that we were looking at, it's about a fifteen thousand mile, like threshold that they're going per year. So we'd be selling five year olds, seventy five thousand mile vehicles.
Okay.
Sixty months deadline.
And then lastly, the outfitting of it's all included in this price?
Correct.
And you guys will take care of, they take care of that, paying that upfront?
Correct.
Okay, and then what color are they going to be? And are we going, are they going to have wraps, put them on or are they going to be just solid white?
That's built in with the premier, just our design we have now. So the Pride Creek Police, it'll be the same design that we have, premier signs will do it and it's all built in.
And that's included in the price too, okay.
Yeah, the full, the full outfit is included in that.
Minus the radios, the radios aren't in there. So we could use the old radios out of our cars or if we've got some excess funds later in the year, we could look at them. But right now, the, the radios in the car are working, so.
I'm going to tell you, I'll tell the council, if you have XTL radios, you need to be looking to get the new APX or something. And Kevin can probably back up.
He's going to know more on the radios.
All, all of those are end of life and we're fighting the same thing, so they're not, they're not cheap.
No, we've had that discussion that we're going to have to start looking at that, so.
That, that probably needs to be.
That, that smells of plant oil.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's, it's the same thing with your camera systems, you probably, and no different than computers. I mean, you got to upgrade it. It, it might be worth looking into to start doing with these cars.
There may be grants available too.
Correct, and I am working into some of that.
Is there stuff that you're going to take off the existing cars and put on here? Is everything going to be brand new, cameras and everything all be brand new?
The, the cameras, like the SRAs don't have cameras, so some of the cars aren't even equipped with cameras. But the, the lights aren't going to intertwine because the cars are so old that we're replacing that none of that's going to coexist. Now, say going forward, in five years, we trade out and some of the stuff still works, we'll use it. But like you're getting rid of a ten year old vehicle, a twelve year old vehicle, none, none of that stuff even, it's also outdated. We just get rid of it.
And I'll tell you on the cameras, they're, if you guys are using the old 4RE systems, it's a, it's a hard drive that continually rewrites on itself. And over time, it just continues to degrade because it rewrites over itself so many times. Like, we, we're facing the same thing we have, we've, we've just started upgrading with when we get a new vehicle, because it's the only way to.
And some of the in cars, we're looking at.
It's only way to keep them stable.
Doing away with totally, we got the body cameras, so we're looking at maybe phasing those out because it's about a seventy five hundred dollar hit every time you buy a body cam. And we're running into all kinds of problems with the uploads and it's just a disaster. And it's costing us a lot of money to fit there and try to work on them. And I'm sure you've run into the same issues that we run into.
Hundred percent.
It's a daily thing, they don't upload, body cam is what, ninety percent of the stuff is on anyway.
Unfortunately, in the litigation age that we live in, you, it's a necessity. And Motorola has fixed up a pretty good annuity plan for all the police departments to pay into it, so.
I haven't said a lot, appreciate you unmuting, but I spent a lot of time with Jeremy and Liam around, around over all this. And basically, we should have done this five years ago. We never could get a new paid for that wasn't worn out before, was looking for another. This, this will take care of this situation. It sounds kind of rough at the beginning, but I don't think it is, I think it'll work good by.
I don't think we've earned ourselves any, done ourselves any favors by owning cars.
No, we haven't.
No.
I think we've only bought trouble.
No, and again, when Jacob came to us last year, I don't know that we were, talked to chief about it a little bit. I don't know that we were really ready last year for this. We were kind of in a, we had a whole bunch of other things that were just, that were overdoing it. Jacob came back, more cities have, have gone to this. I've talked to those cities, everybody's happy, their presentation and numbers and, and the, I think this is the right time for us to make this change.
I give Zach credit on that, that account, he's the one that started doubling stuff to get leases off there that were just piled in there when he took over. So he's really done a good job as far as making sure that account builds itself up by paying stuff that was going to be in there in there.
Save fifteen to twenty thousand in interest while we're paying that off.
And then it will free up other funds for other projects within the city.
Just a couple of things, just in an effort to be thorough. Well, first, based on the list that you've put in the email, the, I noticed a Chevy Tahoe is not mentioned in there? That versus a Ford Explorer, is there any reason?
The, the cost, the Tahos are, I prefer Tahos just because they're bigger, but the cost is about ten, twelve grand higher.
Fifty thousand, fifteen thousand.
Fifty eight versus thirty eight.
Okay.
Thirty eight?
Thirty eight.
Or the base, yeah, just the base.
Because the, the, the cost I saw here was forty nine on the.
Well, we went with a different motor, the, because the, the one motor's a dog, so.
Well, I, I know how popular those Explorers are amongst your guys though, I didn't know. But ju- just in an effort to be thorough, because when something sounds really good, sometimes we don't look, let's look five, ten years in the future. And I know you mentioned a bunch of small towns, and I say, when I say small towns, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to say between eight and twelve thousand a population. We already worked with plenty of those, I know you mentioned some of them on the presentation. Let's just look ten years down the line, we don't know what happens with anything in ten years. If a city gets to a point where they can't keep up with lease payments, and I'm not saying we won't, but if something happens and we can't, what happens? You just repo the vehicle?
So you have a non appropriation clause in there, so if the budget goes away, we'd help you dispose of the vehicles.
Okay.
We'd come up with some options. If it truly came to a budget thing where you can't afford it, we, we would work through what the vehicles is still on the book for. We don't release title by general rule because of the agreements that we have with manufacturers. But at the end of the day, Enterprise's family owned, we try to do it right with clients, regardless of their ability to pay for it.
So in other words, they're not going to roll up with ten wreckers.
That's why they have us.
Well, and, and, but that, that's, that's why I'm asking too, because, I mean, car costs are doing nothing but going up, we all know that. And we don't know what happens in five to ten years. And it, it, we've, some of us have talked amongst ourselves before about trying to find a program to roll out our vehicles. Because, you know, you get a hundred thousand miles on a newer vehicle today, it, it just turns to junk. And the way you guys have to run them, so.
I think the biggest beauty of this thing is that as vehicle prices go up on the new ones, the resale price does hold stronger on that three to six years under a hundred thousand miles, that resale market stays really strong. So that's a big benefit to it. Maintenance is the biggest thing that we've seen changed over the last five or six years, it's really. And then last night, well, not last, two nights ago, the aluminum plant caught on fire. So it's just another headache that we're dealing with.
Yeah.
Well, and we're going to be super optimistic and if Pryor is going to continue to grow and be successful, ten years from now, we will be.
Oh, I, I agree, I agree, but you have to think of that.
All right, okay. So can we amend the motion to authorize the City of Pryor to enter into a lease agreement with Enterprise?
Who's got the motion?
Who made it?
I'll amend my motion to that.
I agree.
Okay, so that would read, discussion of possible action regarding authorization for the City of Pryor went into lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management through Sourcewell Cooperative, purchasing for ten new vehicles, five Chevrolet Silverado fifteen hundred crew cab, four by four SRO units, and five Ford Explorer utility all wheel drive patrol units, including associated aftermarket upfitting to be paid from Police Department Vehicles Capital Outlay, four, 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 five, five, four, one, eight. This purchase will use funds from the freed up lease payments and surplus vehicle sales revenue.
One final question. Do we start paying when we make the agreement or when we take delivery?
When you take the, take the ownership of the vehicle or whenever it delivers. So I do want to address that, so you pay, you'll pay fifty percent of the aftermarket cost upfront, which I know chief already mentioned that. And then you'll get billed, the following month will be when the first bill will actually roll out on the vehicle.
Thank you.
Jake, you good on that?
Yep.
We'll, we'll call for the vote.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Chupshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Chris Shears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Thank you.
We didn't, we didn't find out about the putting the BG in them.
They're not going to do that.
You say they are not going to do that, there will be no BG.
No BG.
They, they cover maintenance costs.
Well, good, see?
All right.
Finally got it going to them, Bruce, about BG.
All right.
Mayor, can we take a break?
You know what, we probably can, and then when we come back, we'll start with mayor's report item B and we will go chronologically from there. But we'll take a, we'll be back at seven thirty five. Hannah, I know I said we're gonna come back to B, but I'd like to go back to consent agenda item T.
Yeah.
We gotta figure that out. So, are you ready?
Ready.
Okay. Approved police budget fund two fifteen for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
Motion.
A motion from Brashears.
I'll second.
Second from Choya. I think we're good with the numbers that we have, that we figured it out. There won't be any problem with what Councilman Brown brought up.
I think it's fair to.
The amount is.
The grand total will be three million, four sixty, two seventy, and eighty-eight cents. So, I think what in long what it was, was that we actually under budgeted last year. And so this amount is still less than what we spent last year. Less the employees that we got, I think will be right in mind where we need to be. If there's no further discussion on that, we'll.
So, the new number is what?
It's the same.
For the total?
Okay. Three million, four sixty.
Two seventy.
Okay. And eighty-eight cents.
Well, and also just to put it out there too, a lot of what we did last year was an anticipation of trying to save this year.
No, salaries are one million, eight hundred and ten thousand.
Back on track here, well.
Ten thousand.
Call for the vote?
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shopshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brashears?
Yes.
Brown?
Abstain.
Trammell?
Yes.
Alright.
Mayor, one quick question about the budget here.
Yes, sir.
We still have yet to go golf course.
Golf course, correct.
Rec Center and Capitol.
Correct, and I talked to Jeff about that tonight, right?
When do you project to have those figures?
We're gonna meet later this week.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. Mayor's Report Item B, discussion and possible action regarding a proposal from Civic Plus for the Agenda and Minute Management Module. Implementation and recurring services with an initial term in the amount of seven thousand, eight seventy-five to be paid for managerial capital outlay account four-four, four-four-five, five-four-one-two.
What in the world is that?
Motion.
Got a motion from, I'll explain it.
Okay.
Soon as I get a second on.
I'll second.
Okay, motion from Brashears and a second from Brown. Jay has been doing a tremendous amount of research. As we've talked about ways to streamline and do our records management and, and our agendas and our meetings minutes. Civic Plus is who we use for some of our online services. They have a module that we can get, that is this Agenda and Minute Management Module. There's towns such as Tulsa, Kawhita, and others that use this. Basically, what it does is it takes the minutes from the meeting, and it catalogs it into the next meeting it should go into. It also keeps better track of the forms, the data, allows us to keep better control, and ultimately will free up some of the time that the girls are spending manually typing some of this out for every meeting, so.
So, it's basically AI?
No, not really, it's a.
It's a process.
It's a process.
Each section as it needs to go.
Yes.
Keep it organized, you guys.
Yeah, so for example. Yes, it makes it searchable.
It's.
So, for example, if we take the, the items from Jeremy, it's what's on my screen, his, his notes. She could go in, click those notes, they'd be added as a file, not as scrolling images. So, on the side of your thing, instead of seeing where it says sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, it would say documents from Jeremy regarding whatever. And then the next meeting it would go to would be set up, and it would automatically take that file and put it in that meeting. So, she doesn't have to manually do that, she doesn't have to manually scan. It would also catalog it in our virtual vault to give us better records retention.
Where you can find it.
Correct.
Yes.
So, it's got a built-in script reserve built in. Okay.
Yeah, yes, yeah. You know, there's, there's always the manual. Yes, Bruce.
Does that? For our, like, any online repository for the public or anything, is there any, does that?
Yeah, so you can get on, like, I went on to Kawhita's, and theirs is really well laid out. And, and it would be our desire to follow their, their design. Basically, you can go in and click on their, their meeting, and you'll see all of those attachments over here. You click on it, it pops it up, and it'll also tell you what meetings those are in.
I think there's also, don't get me wrong, but I think there's a way you can search, like, I know last year we approved such and such.
Correct.
I don't know when it was, and you can actually search the entire history.
Yes.
I pulled a couple.
Well.
Which would be massive, because what you guys have to do right now is literally go to the website and just start. There's no way to do a search.
So, so if there was a mass rezoning to commercial of a bunch of houses.
Yes.
So, fifty years ago, fifty years from now, if they're asking, well, where did all these places get rezoned commercial, instead of going through paper or?
Five minutes, about five minutes.
Yeah, you go in and you type.
It will also help with records request, people will be able to look for things that may want to know that's already approved.
So, yeah, right now, the process, Jeff's back there shaking his head, I guarantee you, Jeff, Chase, Terry, you've probably tried to go through some of that in the past. You literally have to. You literally have to sit there and click, and click, and open, and scroll, and click. This would allow you to do a search query, commercial rezoning from ag to CAR, and it would pull it up, automatic, I mean, and you'd be in there. So, I think for the best interest of the city, this would be something that would allow us better to manage our records.
Would that also potentially apply to police as far as?
Yeah, so this will, this will actually allow us to manage up to, for the module that, that Jay has sought out, will allow us to manage up to ten public boards. Which is more than we, I mean, that's, that's sufficient for what we do.
So, so, Kenneth, it's not Police Department Cemetery, this is for meetings.
Okay. Yes. Okay.
Records of meetings.
Again, and I'm gonna highly encourage this, I think Jay's done a lot of work, and Hannah will attest, Jay has put a lot of time into this, and has had meetings with Civic Plus, and done her research, and, and I, two thumbs up, support this.
We are teaming it up on that.
Okay, and the only other thing that I noticed here that I just wanna confirm, this is saying the initial is seven thousand, eight seventy-five, and the annual re- annual recurring to fifty-three. But that shows to be like a year one, the other, the other costs here mention about up to a ten thousand dollar recurring services.
Yeah, we'll have that five, what is it, five something, that five thousand will be our, our renewal. It's based on the modules that we look at, so.
And I was saying, that's not just year one going into year two, that would be, I mean, obviously subject to certain changes, but we're not looking at that doubling in three years.
No, not as of right now, so. You know, these companies are always subject to coming in and say we're raising our price, but right now, that's, our initial would be seven thousand, eight seventy-five for this year. Further discussion? We'll call for the vote.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shopshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brashears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Here.
I'm sure somewhere in Shoto, Jay is doing a happy dance right now. Alright, Item D, discussion and possible action regarding an expenditure in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, three oh-two-twenty-six. To Motorola Solutions for six Motorola APX and thirty portable radios with accessories, twenty-one thousand, four seventy-six, to be paid from existing Motorola credit received from Spillman cancellation. And seven thousand, eight twenty-five, fifty-six to be paid from police equipment capital outlay, four-four, four-four-five, five-four, two-four. This is a state contract price.
Motion?
Motion from Choya and a second from Bradshaw, discussion.
So, basically, the, the radios that we have are phasing out, they don't provide them anymore, so we're trying to update what we can. The school actually went in, partners, they bought five new SRO radios that work inside the buildings, so we can actually get inside, inside the buildings, now you can hear the SROs on our main channel. The school paid for all that off of a grant, and they didn't come through us, they just did it through the school. So, these will start updating the officers, I think, with this. We're one short of actually having everybody on an updated radio versus the old ones, which I might have one, but the, the old ones. So, the N thirties were the, the cheaper version, there was N seventies, and then the, the style that GRDA carries, we looked at those two, those are actually more expensive, but he said that they're looking at phasing those out, so go with the N thirties, what he suggested, which is several thousand dollars cheaper than the N seventy. So, I'm not a radio guru, I just took his advice and trying to get as many as I can. That reason we have the credit on there is because we canceled Spillman, which is a Motorola product, and we had that excess that we'd already paid, so that came back into credit. It's twenty-one thousand, four seventy-six, seventy, that credit.
Thank you. Further discussion on that, any questions?
Just for clarification to the public, it seems like over the past, just take the past year, how much we've spent on radios and technology and all that. Some folks may ask, well, why can't we use the same radios for thirty years?
Because they phase out, I mean, they don't, they don't fix them anymore, you're gonna spend more to fix an old radio or camera system than you would to replace.
If you can find parts.
Correct.
As I alluded to earlier with Motorola's annuity plan, they stopped making parts for radios after about seven to ten years, you can buy them, and after that, you're not gonna buy them at all. But after about five, even that lifespan gets hard to find those parts, you have to start finding from other vendors. I mean, I'm sure Catherine Trammell can speak to it, but we deal with the same thing at GRDA, you're just as easy, honestly, to make a long-term budget to replace them about every seven to ten years, and keep your fleet updated. And cameras are about five to seven, if you, if you're lucky, probably closer to three to five.
And just for reference, these are well over four thousand apiece, where the school paid eleven thousand for the SRO radios because they're inside the building, so. Of course, they had a federal grant to pay for it, but versus a repeater, so that's just kind of a reference point, but these are a lot cheaper.
There's no further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Shopshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brashears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Item C, nope, item E. I promise I'm not blind. Discussion and possible action regarding a contract addendum between the City of Prior Creek and Prior Public Schools for the twenty-five, twenty-six School Resource Officer Program, providing a reimbursement in the amount of thirteen thousand, four forty-three. To the city for the purchase of five Dell Pro rugged laptops and five Havasland one-twenty watt power supplies to be paid from the continuing education allocation included in the contract.
Motion?
Second.
So, motion from Choya, second from Brashears, this is pretty much the same thing we did last year, and the school is on board with that.
Correct, I sent it to them, they should have met last night on it and approved it, so, just a change of the training budget, maybe it funds around.
Okay, question, just for clarification on the language in the agenda here, this is just for the contract addendum to be changed, right? This, this particular item on the agenda?
Correct.
Okay, to tie in with the radios, I'm sorry, the laptop, the laptops, but moving on down to G, that same figure, number figure is down there, but with different numbers of laptops and different accessories, so is that a scribner's error, or is it the same?
No, we added a computer, so there was a discount rate, if we didn't buy the six, we were gonna pay a lot more. We need computers anyway, so we're just buying the sixth, and it's gonna be at a discounted rate versus a higher rate, so that's why there were six on there. So, the school's paying for five, which are gonna be the SROs out of that contract, so they're paying the thirteen, four-four-three, and the city will pay the.
Sixteen.
Whatever's in the difference between the sixteen, one-three-one and the thirteen, four-four-three is twenty-four hundred and something.
Okay, but they're tied, kind of tied in together, but thanks. But again, though, it's, and I'm just trying to see if it's an error, because on item E, it says the five laptops and five power supplies, but then on item G, it's the laptops and. And the.
Six Dell Pro laptops and five laptops and chargers.
You're correct.
And chargers.
You're talking about the addendum of?
Yeah.
Yes, you're correct. But the numbers are gonna be correct on the next one, E is just adding the contract for the school. So, we have to addend, amend the contract for the exact amount that we're gonna do it for, so that's what that one's for. Then you drop down, and we're gonna purchase the extra, so we'll purchase six when we drop down, if that makes sense.
Well, I'm talking about the language where it says the five power supplies on E, but down there, it's chargers instead of power supply, so.
It'll be.
Same.
Correct, same thing.
Okay, alright, thank you. I call for the vote.
Well, thank you, appreciate that. Off the vote.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brashears?
Yes.
Brown?
Major Knight.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Smith? Lamar?
Yes.
Shopshire?
Yes.
Terry threw everybody off by doing that, you made Bruce laugh more than I've seen him laugh ever.
You can't keep the same pattern, you gotta keep, keep people on their toes.
Mix it up, alright, item G, we've already done F. Discussion and possible action regarding an expenditure in the amount of sixteen thousand, one thirty-one sixty-two Dell Technologies for six Dell Pro rugged laptops and chargers to be paid from police equipment capital outlay account. Four-four, four-four-five, five-four-two-four, thirteen thousand, four forty-three, to be reimbursed by the Prior Public Schools for the five laptops and chargers to be designated for school resource officers. This is a state contract price. Motion from Brashears?
Second.
Second from Bradshaw, I'm gonna get Bradshaw. No discussion, call for the vote.
Brashears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Here.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shopshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Before we go into the executive sessions, let's, uh, let me look at this real quick, let's go to the addendum, and our crowd does not have to hang out.
What, item O?
I was just looking, yes, let's do item O. Discussion and possible action to hire Reese Riker as a policeman at the Prior Creek Police Department, range J, step one, effective October twentieth, twenty twenty-five, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Hannah Fisher.
Motion.
Second. Motion from the Shears and a second from Brown.
So, on this one, he's gonna fill the vacancy of Hannah Fisher, the goal is gonna be to replace her in that spot, we just aren't in the position right now to move somebody from patrol to DVO. So what we're gonna do on that spot is put Justin Allen under the DVO grant again, he's done it before, so we'll get reimbursed through Val-Wal for that fund still, we'll just be running short of detectives for now until, like I said, we're not to the point where anybody's ready to transition over. In the future, that would be the goal, to put somebody back, not add a new spot, but transition somebody from the patrol back over to Val-Wal.
Is Mr. Riker already click certified?
No, he will go to the academy, he's in here tonight, too. He will go to the.
Be impatient.
He will go to the academy in January with Richardson, who we just hired as well. And so, who's right now? San Frans, he's gonna move closer. So, his wife's going to school to, there's been an RN, that's where he's from, is over there.
All right, further discussion, if none, we'll call for the vote.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shopshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
The Shears?
Yes.
Congratulations. Welcome.
All right. Yeah, we're gonna go to the addendum now. Item one, presentation of special recognition. Do we need to vote on that one?
No.
No, what's wrong?
It's no business.
We have an opportunity to give some recognition to somebody that's very important to the city. And, you know, we wanna recognize the effort, the hard work, the dedication, my goodness, the dedication that has gone in over the last several decades. But at this time, I'd like to recognize Terry, Terry Alward, that's you. Terry, we've got a plaque for you, and the plaque reads, City of Prior Creek, Mays County presents with the highest distinction and acknowledgement. We recognize twenty-six years of dedication and journalistic excellence with the paper. We also recognize the time before that, but this is specifically for your time with the paper. Your steadfast commitment to informing and connecting the people of Prior has strengthened our community and preserved its stories for generations. With gratitude and appreciation, Terry, we give you a standing ovation and wish you the best of retirement.
Only positivity in your last article.
No, there's no cartoons on, I had that low. Presented from the ZAP.
The ZAP.
Actually, I didn't say that, but we're gonna leave that on this, because Terry, thank you so much.
Gotcha.
Speech.
Mayor, I'd like to add that Mr. Alward came here in nineteen, in the summer of nineteen seventy-seven to go to work for the Daily Times, fresh out of the U of Mo, Missouri Journalism School, and he's been a vital member of this community for almost fifty years.
Mizzou? With you, Mizzou, correct? They say Mizzou, well, that explains a lot. Missouri's got a lot of good journalism.
A whole bunch of people go to Mizzou to study because the Mizzou accent is the most neutral. I'm Midwest. How I know that, I have no idea.
Terry, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
And you're always welcome to be at every meeting we have.
You can run for council now if you want.
All right, item two, discussion and possible action regarding an addendum to the HVAC bid package for the Rec Center.
Motion?
A motion from the Shears?
I'll second.
Second from Choya. Basically what this is, we've been working with Phyllis on this, again, she is always in the background there, giving us solid advice. The bidders came through to the Rec Center, our original instruction was that we needed to replace that unit with a twenty-five ton unit. One of the bidders came in and said twenty-five is overkill, and eighteen with a heat circulator, I believe I got that right, is more than sufficient and is all you need. And that a twenty-five ton was gonna actually cost us overkill and additional electrical needs would be required as well. However, when we put this together as a seventy-four bid, and it had thirty some odd pages, we specifically asked for a twenty-five ton. Typically, that would just be what we take, but in respect to the subject matter experts, we sent this to Dale. Dale did say, called back today and said that an eighteen would be sufficient. And that the twenty-five would work, but it's not what we have up there, so we are simply extending the exception date so that we can get some of these things worked out. This is not discussing where we're going with what we're doing, this is just to put the addendum out there that says we're going to extend it out till the twenty-first, so that we can make necessary changes if we need to. And then from there, any changes we need, we'll need to figure out where we're gonna post those.
What, what's up there now?
Right now, it's an eighteen. So the twenty-five is gonna require a lot more than what we already have, so.
Is that eighteen's up there now?
An eighteen is up there now, but it needs to have a recirculator, heat recirculator. Basically, if you think about like your car with your air conditioner in your car and you have to recirculate, that's what this would do. With the humidity and things in that building, it's, it's required.
Sure.
So, we just need to continue to work with Dale and figure out how we're gonna do that. But for right now, in the essence of time, we need to extend that acceptance. So that's, that's what we're looking for a vote on, is just to, to put that addendum that will allow us that extra time.
And does that need to be posted again in a legal news?
The addendum is in your, in your packet, do what? The addendum actually says when we're extending to.
And we'll update it as it's occurred.
It's reposted in the paper.
Online.
It will have to be reposted, yes. So, that's, we wanna try to get it in one last go around. It'll also be on the city website, after that, we'll, we will send all of our legal postings to Claremore for the time being.
Unless he wants to stay open another week.
So. All right. Call for the vote.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Here.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shopshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
The Shears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Let's go to the city attorney's report, item A. Discussion and possible action regarding a resolution calling for the general election in twenty twenty-six.
Motion?
I have a motion from Choya.
Second.
Second from Bradshaw. It's pretty standard procedure, we just have to get those out there and do that by resolution, so. There's no discussion on that, we'll call for the vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shopshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
The Shears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Okay, item B, introduction and first reading and discussion of an ordinance changing and amending the zoning classification from agriculture to residential seventy of property described as follows, and waive the reading.
We'll make a motion to waive the reading.
A motion and a waiving of the reading from the Shears.
Second.
Second from Choya. Discussion. Done, call for the vote. Do what?
You don't need a vote as first reading.
All right, awesome, don't call for the vote. Pursuant to section nineteen of the city, at Prior Creek, this ordinance shall not be passed the date of introduction. All right, now we are going back up to the executive sessions. So, item H, possible executive session concerning the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of communications officer, trainee, Mariana, Mariana? Twenty-five through seven B one.
Motion?
Second.
Mariana, I'm sorry, you have a tough name. All right, we have a motion from Choya.
Second.
Second from Charles, call for the vote.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shopshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
The Shears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Here.
I think she was having a green beer.
Motion.
Shopshire?
Yes.
The Shears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Item J, possible action based on executive session concerning the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of, one, communications officer, dispatch, trainee, Mariana Capicciini, Thurmeyer, twenty-five, three oh seven B one.
I'll make a motion that we support Chief Ken Trail's action regarding Mariana Capicciini Thurmeyer, Thurmeyer, sorry if I butcher your name, in regarding her employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, discipline, or resignation.
Second.
A motion from Shears and a second from Choya for all of what he said. Call for the vote.
Redchaw?
Yes.
The Shears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shopshire?
Yes.
Item K, discussion of possible action to allow Prior Creek Police Department to accept applications for prior, or for police dispatcher to fill the vacancy created by, uh, Mrs. Thurmeyer.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion from Shears and a second from Choya. Call for the vote.
The Shears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shopshire?
Yes.
Redchaw?
Yes.
Mayor, I'm taking you to vote on that. You didn't read it on Facebook or get it in.
Listen to you. All right. Item L, possible executive session concerning the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, resignation of Officer Jack Cunningham, twenty-five, three oh seven B one.
Motion.
Second.
Motion from, uh, for Shears and a second from Choya. Call for the vote.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shopshire?
Yes.
Redchaw?
Yes.
Shears?
Yes.
There we go. All right, item M, consider resuming regular session. No action taken during the executive session.
Motion.
Motion from Shears, second. Second from Choya. Call for the vote.
Thank you.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shopshire?
Yes.
Redchaw?
Yes.
The Shears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Item N, is Nancy, possible action based on executive session concerning the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of Officer Jack Cunningham, twenty-five, three oh seven B one.
Make a motion, we have no action?
And I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion from Choya and a second from Shears. Call for the vote. When you're ready.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shopshire?
Yes.
Redchaw?
Yes.
The Shears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Item P, uh, possible executive session regarding personnel matters related to the prior police department's assigned unit take-home vehicle policy, twenty-five, three oh seven B one.
Motion.
Second.
A motion from, uh, Charles and a second from Shears. Call for the vote.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shopshire?
Yes.
Redchaw?
Yes.
The Shears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And I'll, Terry, I'll give you that update real quick on the South Elliott project. There was a mix-up in the pipe somewhere, so Dale reached out to them, they should've got that taken care of. They also did not have our tax exemption number, so they were trying to include tax on our purchase of that pipe. And so, that's all been worked out, so that should be moving along going forward.
So they give you an estimated start date?
It was supposed to be today was the official for the contract, getting the tax stuff worked out. Dale will get back with me probably tomorrow on when they're gonna be ready.
Okay, thank you.
What day did you say?
The 28th.
Thank you. Unforeseeable business, I don't have any this time. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion from Brashir's and a second from Troya, and call for the vote.
The Shears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shawshire?
Yes.
Redshaw?
Yes.
Okay. We will move on to the prior Public Works Authority, we'll call the meeting to order, approve the minutes of the September 16th, 2025 meeting.
Motion.
And a motion from Brashir's.
Second.
Second from Redshaw. We'll call for the vote when you're ready.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shawshire?
Yes.
Redshaw?
Yes.
The Shears?
Yes.
Prove claims for purchase orders for the prior Public Works Authority through October 7th, 2025.
Motion.
Second.
Motion from Brashir's and a second from Troya, and call for the vote. Prove claims for purchase orders for the Prior Public Works Authority through October seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
Second.
Motion from Brashir's, and a second from Choya. We'll call for the vote when you're ready.
Trammell?
Yes.
Smith? Lamar?
Yes.
Shawshire?
Yes.
Redshaw?
Yes.
Brashir's?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shawshire?
Yes.
Redshaw?
Yes.
Brashir's?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.